Oh, get the new thing.
I'll go there.
I guess.
We shall try the hell.
I'm like, how much my hair is standing up?
Well, Patty, you got me, you know. I don't want to study your path.
In case you want to get a message points in a while.
Yeah. They didn't gristle for like a few minutes.
Good evening, everybody. January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Five oh three P M. This is a work session for the Harney County Court. Public and welcome to attend, but this is a work session for the purpose, like fair or everybody else knows. So, um, the topic, the agenda item is, uh, and that didn't get current fully on that agenda, but it's the, uh, looking into a county administrator and then subsequently a, uh, transition to a county board of commissioners. So I guess as far as the agenda would go, it'd just be the, uh, amendment of adding the county administrative role. Because I'm writing on here. I have provided a copy of O R S chapter one, one, one. Specific sections of that are subsection point zero five five and point zero seven five. And a copy of chap O R S chapter two zero three. And the specific section of that will be point two three zero. The O R S chapter one eleven is in regards to probate authority. And the application of probate law, probate courts and commissioners. That specific section point zero five five. Uh, transfer appropriate jurisdiction, all appropriate, all probate jurisdiction, authority, powers, functions, and duties of the county. County courts and judges thereof are transferred to the circuit courts. And the judges there thereof in all counties except Gillum, Grant, Harney, Mount here, Sherman, and Wiegler Counties. And then then point zero seven five probate jurisdiction vested. Jurisdiction of all probate matters, causes and proceeds invested in the county courts of Gillum, Grant, Harney, Mount here, Sherman, and Wiegler Counties. And then, uh, O R S two oh three point two three zero specifically talks about the process for converting from a county court to a board of commissioners. I know that's a subsequent matter, but I just wanted to explain the handout so you could give before.
Right, no, and I appreciate you, uh, providing those for us. Um, you know, I think it's going to be important as we work through the details about, and that's what we're kind of hoping to do tonight is kind of set some high level conversation in place. This will be one of subsequent meetings to get to where we want to get to, but, um, we have to have a starting point. And so tonight is, is just that with providing some background with what's in statute. Members of court make the public aware of what the court is considering. Um, obviously in a work session, you know, uh, no decisions can be made. And so it's going to be mostly just, you know, discussion. Most court, each of us, I think, have done different, uh, have previously worked at this meeting of, of finding out different things. And so I think we each have, um, different things we've looked at so that we can discuss and, um, I don't know. Anybody in particular wants to start with kind of background or legwork that they've done prior to the meeting that they wanted to?
Well, um, we're not. I spoke to a commissioner in Gillum County who is in the process of trying to figure out if they're gonna, um, change. And I spoke to county judge in Crook County, just to see what their situation was. And for Gillum County, that was where, um, they told me about the six counties that by statute have probate and it can't be taken away. I mean, you know, the, it was conveyed on them by the state statute. So they said that that's something that you're now working, working on. Crook County, because they're not listed and yet they have a county judge and county court. I just didn't know. So I called the county judge and I, I, I asked him. I said, you're, you're county court, right? And he said, yeah. I said, do you have an administrator? He said, yes, we do. We haven't had one very long. And he said, I think it's a big mistake. And I said, oh, really? And he said, but, you know, one of my other county court members doesn't think it's a big mistake. And then we've got a new person coming on and, and I said, why, why do you think it's a mistake? I mean, from, from I, I said, I'd like to see what the job description is because what is an administrator? That can mean different things to different people, you know? And he said, well, so I just share this because it was kind of a surprise. I, I, um, and he said, well, you have an administrator, of course, they're gonna, they're gonna do a lot of management things and make, make some decisions at this level. You know, before it comes for separate from the governing body. And he said, it's, it might start out okay, but over time that administrator is the continuity, which also can be a good thing, right? But they're the continuity, they're the knowledge base. And then as the elected officials are elected and new ones are elected, et cetera. They all rely on that administrator to tell them, you know, so, so what is that? And then they bought, they usually buy it lock, stock and barrel is the truth and, and the way it is and the way it should be. And he said, I think it has the potential to really ruin a community because your elected officials. They can be recalled, they can be, you know, new people can be elected in there, they're accountable to the people if something's awry or something's not. And he answered with administrator is different. So I said, well, I haven't heard that point of view. So thank you for that. And I just wanted to share that with you because that was a surprise. I, I, first of all, I thought maybe they'd add administrator for a long time. Uh, because they're a larger county, a lot, lot more business and stuff. And I said, I said, do you, I said, are you county judge? He said, yes. I said, what judicial function do you have? He said, I have none. I said, when did that happen? He said, maybe fifty years ago. He said, it's been that way for a long time. So that's different too. I don't know why.
I have the, and I didn't get right in here until just now, but I can kind of grab it. I have the, the chart from A O C on the different county structures throughout the state, how many, how many, what their, what form of government they have, you know, there's only seven of us left with, with county courts. Some, whether they have, whether they have, uh, a three commission, four, the five, uh, whether they're full time, part time. All, all that kind of stuff is broken down on that chart. I don't know if I can get into second.
And that chart was wrong because it had counties, counties wrong. Yeah, it is. I, I printed that off. Um, because there's different forms of government. There's home rule, there's county court.
There's charter, charter home rules, statutory home rule. And, um,
Statutory home rule, constitutional home rule.
Constitutional home.
And that, yeah, so there's.
We're a statutory of Bonnville County.
So anyway, uh, I think the more people were colleagues on county courts or, you know, that we talked to or that used to be a county court, the better. I know that, uh, I haven't spoken with them and said really recently, but I know Sherman County, Malder County, Grant County judges all say county court's the way to go and the way, way to stay. That's how, that's how they feel. I, I have not spoken to them recently to find out. Do you have an administrator? What does that administrator do? And is, is that a good thing? So I just share that and that we, we can continue all of us if you want to make phone calls and, um, find out more. Uh, Moro County changed over in two thousand seventeen. I have not taught, spoken to them yet, but I remember when I looked it up, they had been a county court and they are a board of commissioners.
And I think they're the most recent one to make that conversion.
Yes, in fact, it might be reflected in this chart. More, but, um, yeah, so I, I haven't spoken to anyone from Moro County. But just, I just made a few phone calls, haven't made more, but I thought I'd share the one from Judge Crawford and Crook County, just because it was a different point of view than I was expecting to hear.
Who, who does their administrator work for?
I didn't, I didn't ask him a whole lot of questions. I, he just had a little bit of time. I'd left a message. If you could please call me. And I took some notes which I left at home and, um, but that was the gist of it. And, uh, he said, yeah, he said, when you guys talk about it, he said, really think about it. He said, because he said there were, you know, it sounds like a really good idea, probably. Especially if you feel like the administrative burden is, you know, too much on the judge or, or however, but just think it through because, um, you always want, however you set it up, you want to make sure that the governing body is held accountable and that they are able to be held accountable well. So that they're not kind of at the mercy of a longstanding administrator that you presume knows a lot. But I don't want to talk about, they're the points to you, but I just wanted to share that.
Well, and my reason for bringing it up is, is I've been on the county court, uh, you know, the the structure and then historically that the judge position, uh, chairs the county court, uh, wears the judicial hat for probate. Um, also is given other hats such as, uh, the budget officer typically. Um, the public health authority has also been historically stood on that role. And I think that, um, that is a lot for any one person to come in with all those skill sets as an elected official to do and do well as long, as well as being the commissioner role by statute and then the county administrator. And so when I, when I, and this is nothing personal with, with Bill, uh, coming into office. Uh, I felt the same way as I became a commissioner and was trying to understand how a governing body functions and how we've historically functioned. And then just as Commissioner Garrow has talking to counterparts from other counties, but, um, I feel honestly, after being a member of this governing body for this amount of time, that it puts us as a governing body in an awkward situation as a quorum to be able to go to our county administrator and discuss county business without breaking public meeting law. And to me, that's my number one situation that I don't feel like it, it should ever be put upon us to put ourselves in a situation where we have to break public meeting law to conduct county business to check in with our administrator to follow up on, on different topics because we can't do that in the public eye with a member of our quorum. And I know historically it has been done and appeared to function, but I, as I've talked to other people that have sat in this role historically, I'm not the first one to have concern with that and to, to feel like it puts us in a, a bad place on a frequent basis. And I don't want the public perception to ever be that we're conducting business outside of the public meeting. And that that's how it's done. And that's how it's always been done. And we're just going to continue to carry on. And so I really, for me to stay in this role, that has to change or I will not continue in this role. It puts me in a place as an elected official where I refuse to be going into the future. And I've shared that with my colleagues and, you know, they understand the nuance of both that. And, you know, Judge Hart coming in and after a year, I'm sure that you've seen the complications that that creates amongst our relationship as a form. Uh, you know, to try to have enough public meetings where we're always conducting business in the public eye is very challenging. It is. And so my request, uh, during the last budget, uh, meetings were to try to write a county administrator role into the budget. Because I do want to be able to, as a member of the governing body, be able to check in on county business and be able to know what's going on without having to put ourselves in a situation where as a quorum we're outside of the law.
One of the things that really bothered me budgetarily, fiscally is that I don't, I don't know if there's any county judges that are the budget officer. I, you know, the budget law allows us to appoint whoever we want, including an outside entity that doesn't even live in Harney County. If we want to appoint, you know, a professional to do it or whatever, but it always bothered me and it wasn't anything personal against the, the county judge, but since I've been on, the county judge comes up with his budget, you know, cut like the governor's recommended budget that gets presented to the legislature, right? And then they all start trying to think it. Well, the county judge brings it before the budget committee of which he is a member. But, you know, he's vested in it because he worked really hard on it. He thinks, he thinks he wrote a good budget, maybe whatever. And and as the budget officer, he knows the details or can, is the one that answers our questions when we have questions and we assume that he's answering them correctly. When we, you know, and I felt that was a great weakness and it wasn't appropriate because the bud, you know, budget committee has got to be fair and objective as we work toward it. And it's just human. If you, if you wrote something, you did work really hard on it and then you know, you're going to defend it maybe more than you would if you were just receiving it and looking at it and trying to find solutions to things. So I've always, I've always been uncomfortable with the county judge being the budget officer and having to do it. But I think it's always been a matter of staffing or partially. It's been a matter of we don't have staff capacity and the money to pay and hire another physician. But I would, I would like to see someone, you know, do that job who is not, um, you know, they don't have an agenda. They don't, you know, they're not getting county employees and department heads pulling at them all the time, you know, uh, you know, we need this, we need that. It's just, it just goes on and on. And so that's another reason. It's nothing personal. I don't know who else could do it this year, frankly, you know, but I mean, it's, it's, huh, not me. But, you know.
I I echo a lot of the same sentiments, um, you know, the quorum issues. Um, the, um, the budget officer, the many hats that this, this chair has worn over the years. Um, and, and just getting down to efficiency and being able to do all that. I, I, I agree one hundred percent. It's tough to, it's tough to have those or try to have those kind of communications, conversations between the three of us when it's dealing with just a county administrative issue, not a, not a decision of, of governance, but just daily, daily administration. But the way the law is written and the way the attorney general views it, it's, they put a pretty cut and dry line on it. So I agree that that would help, um, an administrator would help that role or help that, uh, solve that issue. I agree that, uh, and quite frankly, for myself, uh, an administrator that would take on a lot of those duties that I've been doing in this last year would really free me up to be able to do other things for the county in, um, in the furtherance of the betterment of, of the county itself, whether that's grants, whether that's projects, whether that's whatever that, whatever that may be. I would rather have the time to do that than all the stuff that I'm bogged down with on a daily basis. The budget officer role, again, it was just a traditional hat that this person wore and I, and I learned a lot this past year in, in performing that role, which is good. Which is good base information, uh, to, to carry on through. Uh, Deb, are you muted? Yes, she is. There she is. Um, so I, many, many, many points that I agree with you. One of the kind or a couple of concerns that I have and, you know, things that we can work through in this process is, um, is first, I think, and foremost, how do we afford it? Where do we, where do we find the funds to staff the position? And, and a position at this level, like any other major management, the position is going to be at least eighty thousand to six figures a year. That's, that's a lot of, and, and, and with our current budget situation, the budget deficit and trying to rebuild from that, we put away, I think about two hundred plus or minus, I think it was about two hundred thousand dollars. And I think our, our revenue or our general fund reserve now is around eight hundred thousand. I don't have the exact numbers, but somewhere around. And, and those numbers should be should be, to be comfortable, should be around the two million, two and a half million mark. Um, we'd go through eight hundred thousand dollars like that if we had some kind of a major incident. If we don't make cuts somewhere to fund that eighty to a hundred thousand dollar salary. Then we're down to a hundred thousand dollars that we put away each year and it'll take even longer for the county to, to realize that financial security. So that's my first concern. Not saying we can't find it, not saying it can't be done, but that is, that is a concern. The next concern that I have is, um, we're lacking on policy. Now this position and this person could help draft and come up with a lot of the policy that we need. But we, as the governing body, we want to make sure we're heavily involved in the development of that policy versus just letting that individual come in and create all the policy the way they would want to see it. It might benefit them and result in a situation like what Crook County is saying. Um, with an individual that becomes a long-term county employee and ends up building up or, you know, cutting right to the quick, a power base. So those are my two, my two big concerns about the establishment of administrator right off the bat is, is, is funding and, and policy. But, but again, I'm not saying I disagree with, with, uh, creating this position. I think it would be a good thing. I think it would better serve the overall function of the count. Really do. My two cents of that.
Well, and as I've had people bring up the funding issue, I, I do believe, you know, right now this, this governing body has to act in a lot of hats and roles where a functioning governing body really shouldn't be in all the day-to-day duties, which would fall back county administrators. And so I, I honestly feel like a lot of the funds for that position could come from right here. As these roles were less day-to-day activities, less staff intensive activities, and we were to bring ourselves back up to our policy role by statute that we hold, you know, we are a legislative body. We are to do those activities and and to be able to bring this body there, we would be spending less time with some of this other stuff where, you know, the salaries here are ground over time because we put on too many hats too. And I feel like as a governing body, we find ourselves down in the weeds more than we want to be. And my hope is that we would be directing the duties of the county administrator to be functioning, to take on a lot of that daily duties and making sure the business of the county is happening. And that we would hold that individual accountable for doing their job and doing it within the policies that we've created. And, and that's where policies will come into play to make sure that we have the correct ones in place that they are to execute. And that's that accountability piece that will fall upon whoever's in these seats to make sure that they're functioning within that boundary and within that role.
Well, one, on the one hand, I told you what, um, Judge Crawford said about, you know, uh, an administrator who you know, has a lot of power, if you will, and, and makes a whole bunch of decisions and stuff that you have to find that balance when you create the position, you know, to, to make sure that the administrator knows their role, we know our role, and then we connect on a regular basis so that we're informed, you know, when there's a tricky situation and, and the policy doesn't cover and they, they come to us, but I, I like the idea of not having one of the elected officials be the administrator, doing some of the personnel management with the department heads, et cetera, because elected officials, I like to think I'm not so much as some people, but you know, they want votes. They want you to like them and vote for them and support them. And a lot of times that elected official might cave when they shouldn't. You know, because this person's got a lot of friends and family and this and that, and they, you know, I, I, I've seen that. I don't like that. I, I don't think we should be doing the administration of what we already have policy for, you know, and just because somebody's trying to whine a lot and maybe get extra consideration and stuff like that. If there's an unusual situation, that can be an executive session with the administrative, you know, kinds of things, but we're, we're trying to come out of a different era. And I can see where an administrator, if that were part of their, if they did their role right, it would be a better place to have a lot of that, um, personnel management stuff happen. You have H R and payroll that you got first. I've been doing a lot of thinking about it, so I, I may, may take all these thoughts back, but, uh, what Judge Crawford said, he said, he calls their administrator and they're a lot larger county than us, okay, with a lot larger budget, et cetera. He said, he likes to think of them as the chief of staff. You know, but that sounds weird to people and whatever, but, you know, the chief of staff has a lot of decision-making authority for approved budget and stuff, and they can handle a lot of these things that don't even need to come to us. It comes to us when this is different. This is, we need, you know, we need your decision on this because this is a different kind of a thing, or you need to know about this. And I like that. I was in the military and that worked pretty good in the, in that environment, but, um, so I was thinking, well, what here in Harney County, I haven't been the county judge. I don't know for sure, but I would like them to do two things. One, I would like them to do the be the budget officer slash kind of keep on the daily, you know, he, we all will track it with these reports that the treasurer sends us and stuff, but they can just kind of be on top of that. And they, they handle personnel management from the standpoint of making sure the department heads get all their evaluations in and that they know if they don't, their employees may suffer from not getting, you know, consideration, you know, the policies that supposedly have if we have them, um, and they can kind of run a tight ship. I'd love to see that. I mean, that, that doesn't mean they're overstepping. It means that's what we've asked them to do. And that would take the burden off of, you know, that third commissioner or, or that judge that acting. I remember thinking of, you know, when people say, why don't you run for judge or whatever? I said, because that's a really bad job. I, I wouldn't want that job. It's too many things you can't do. It's hard to do anything well when you have a job like that. And, uh, yeah, so we should have, I like, I said, I like being a commissioner because you can address areas of concern. And that's really what most people think of us as doing, right? What's the vision for Harney County? What can we do about this? What can we do with the legislature, you know, to, to try to push back on some bad stuff coming down, you know, what, where do we need to be and what do we need to do? And I think there's plenty of work for three people, you know, uh, not just two halftime people. We move up more than halftime for sure, but, um,
you know, and that's where there could be consideration, you know, depending on the appetite of the public as, as these meetings go along. Do you stay with, you know, three members of the board commissioners? Or do you spread it to a five-member board like some counties do so that you have more people to be involved and to put forth efforts, um, as elected officials? And so that's just one of those. As we move on, I would like to know public input about that part of what people see as, as the future of Harney County potentially with the size of their governing body. Um, there's always good and bad to both of any time you expand it, but at the same time, sometimes more hands make lighter work too. And with the amount of stuff that comes out through every legislative session, there's so much that we don't engage in that directly impacts us as a county that we aren't even getting to. And that's where I say our roles that were dictated by statute, we sort of uphold, I feel like are falling sadly to the wayside that we don't get enough of that interference of bad bills and trying to redirect them and trying to testify and be a part of that process that do impact our county directly done because of our current structure. And, and that comes back to that policy side, whether it be policy being legislated to us or policy here that we create to try to have Harney County be functional. And I think that this body can spend a lot more time interacting with that because the state is just constantly coming up with more things to put upon us as counties and we aren't spending the time pushing back that we need to. And we aren't spending the time pushing back that we need to.
Again, I, I agree, the, the lobbying part of it, the. You know, to prevent the unfunded mandates or to help fight back, push back against the unfunded mandates. Takes time, there's, I mean, you know, it's. It's time we don't have, there's opportunities, as you say, for grants and funding, whether it be at the state level or the federal level. But we don't have the capacity to uh, to engage in, and we're missing opportunities. So, I, I, I can't say I disagree in any way, shape, or form with, with the creation of a county administrator. I, I can't, other than those concerns that I have. Um, policy that the individual uh, comes into, you know, the, the administrator would come into, that, that lines out what. Because they're gonna get tested, they're gonna get tested by department heads and other, and others on, on um, those wish lists and everything else. So with policy that says, this is the way it is, and this is the way it's gonna function, then that takes a big weight off of that person's shoulder. So that's why I have concerns about policy, and then again, the funding, so, so other than those two concerns, that's, that's. How we get by those was the question for me.
Well, and I think the funding piece comes back to having a very functioning budget board, um, you know, and I. Our budget board is an amazing group of individuals that have worked really hard to try to be involved in the budget process. Rick Paul's a, a member of that, and you know, does a, an outstanding job, uh, he comes in it with a financial background, you know, and, and that's one thing. I'm never going to claim to have had a financial background, and yet I'm part of that process, and so I think it's one of those situations where. You don't get elected because you have this specific list of credentials behind you, and that you've done X, Y, and Z, and so. I feel like a lot of times with what the officials were putting to roles with very steep learning curves. And yet it doesn't require us to come in with the background, so we always need to function fully within this role, and so. It comes back to the other half of the budget board, having those specialties in their back pocket and, and having that background. To help us as a governing body to function properly and make sure that. No, and I feel like our department heads actually do a very good job, they participate in the budget process. And it's just staying within our budget that we set, you know, and it's keeping a very functional budget officer and process in place. So that we do watch that funding piece and we make sure that we stay within what we can afford, we deal with the nuances of what's coming at us. I think we're all very aware of some things that are coming at us, that we really haven't had the time and effort to spend. Trying to figure out how we deal with into the future. And so those are things, I think that, you know, one of those areas where we can pull ourselves back up to, to really take on and, and to try to navigate. You know, as we have specific things that are drawing away from our funds, or how many FTE is sustainable with our current budget and future budgets. You know, it's, it's those areas that I feel like we need to spend more time going down to, and currently we have not been able to.
And, you know, when you have a really. Good functioning budget process and, and your policies have been pretty good and stuff, then there are counties that have maybe three. Meetings for their budget committee, why? Because the budget, you know, is produced earlier than perhaps. When ours is finally produced, and it gets studied, and then um. The budget officer uh, statement, you know, sets out any major parameters such as. You know, this year constitutes the first year of a shift that the county has decided to go toward to. You know, resize this, this portion or whatever, so that there'll be money for this, so keep that in mind, blah, 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 so you get that. You look at the budget, the, the department heads and all that, it's been worked out pretty much ahead of time. And you don't get a lot of the stuff, um, I mean, it's, you can do it different ways, but. It's not as agonizing because it's being worked on all year, pretty much, you know, it's not. And it's being double check, checked along the way and, and certain things have been done, so. I mean, I think we do good for the way we struggle to do it, but it's, it's just.
It's, it's a little off topic, little side topic, but as far as the budget officer role goes. The first year I had to pretty much do it the same way that we had, that the county have been doing the status quo, to, to determine. Where the inefficiencies were at, it, it, it's not a very efficient process the way it's been done. Other counties, Mount Here County, I had spoke to Judge Joyce over there, and they were done with their budget in April. And just waiting for it to finalize in, in June. Uh, I talked to other counties, the, the, the same process, like you mentioned, that maybe have three budget board meetings, and um. The proposed budget is already pretty much negotiated with department heads and everything before it ever comes to the budget committee. Um, and then the finer details are ironed out there. The, there's a lot of, in, in our, in, in our way of doing it here, there's a lot of labor, it's labor intensive. Uh, it allows itself for errors to be missed because of zero was left off or too many zeros added or whatever. Because of those, the, the manual entry that has to be done on a lot of it, so there's, there's a lot of room for, for. Doing it better, more efficient in our process, and I've been keeping notes and watching things, there's a lot of nuances to different items too that. That um, different line items, different budgets, different departments that, that uh. Takes a little bit to get spooled up on, I mean, I'm still making notes today and I'm working on it almost all year long, like you say, you know. Making notes on things that I need to make sure we address and look at during this next budget season, just a little side comment, but it is, it is, it is, it's cumbersome.
It is, and we are planning on having a separate budget officer discussion in a, a work session at the county court, just so the public's aware, because. With Judge Hart stepping in that and trying to kinda do it how it has been done, and he's taken um. You know, become courses and attended some budget officer trainings where he discovered things that, you know. We didn't know about prior, um, and so I think it's one of those, that's a separate discussion for another night as well, but. We're trying to get better, we're trying to make it a better process, make it a smoother process. And get ourselves, like you say, just pull ourselves out of the weeds a little and try to make efficiencies where we can. So that the time that is spent in the budget process is the time needed, not just the additional time that. Drags on and on for six months and leaves you in a state where that's all you're able to focus on for six months of the, of the year practically.
A lot of nights until nine, ten o'clock during the budget season, but I was still here with the lights on.
Yeah.
And, and, and it shouldn't be that way, it shouldn't take that much time.
But that's, you know, like I say, we're just kinda trying to do some self-reflection of the governing body, this is one of those pieces where. We've had some discussion around it, um, but we want to, you know, kinda help the public understand. The elected officials where we feel like the county needs to move to, uh, you know, we're not gonna solve all this tonight, like say this is. One of a series of meetings we're going to need to hold, and you know, so the public becomes aware of these discussions by hope that, you know. We can get to a point where we can have some public engagement, because I think that we do have a lot of members of this community that do have some good input for us. Um, you know, I talk to constituents all the time, that I learn things from all the time, and so I think that, you know. In future meetings, we can have a lot more interactive um, role of the public of, of bringing up things that they've seen. That they wanna make sure that we include as we move forward, you know, whoever fills the, the role of the governing body. Is what the officials into the future, we're trying to put it in a better state than what we've left it, but I, I think. Better than what we found it, because I, I feel like that if we aren't trying to do that, then we really aren't doing our due diligence. And so this is just, like you say, somewhere where I want to get to personally. Um, and I, I hope that my colleagues, you know, will slop through it with me and, and try to get there. I think, like I say, the funding piece, it, it is gonna impact us directly, but I do believe that it's the right way to approach it. Because it is gonna have to come out of some of these salaries. And be pulled a little bit from some other place in the budget as well, and I know we talked in the, the budget meetings. That you were going to try to look along the year of any, you know, opportunities to. Additional funds or not backfill positions that you could see weren't necessary, and you know, that's. Part of how we're going to get there in the funding piece.
Yeah. So, um, so I think we're all pretty much in agreeance, it's a topic worth exploring. And pursuing. What do we wanna do between now and our next work session? I mean, is there any research we wanna do, make assignments or anything to come back to, come back to the next work session with? Um, analysis, budget analysis, so whatever, I'm, I'm just throwing out ideas there for us.
I'd like to ask our HR person, unless you don't think um, that would be okay. Um, to call and get the job descriptions of administrators from counties. So we can at least see what some counties have as their written job description of them.
Yeah, I do have one, but it would be nice to see several and what the, kind of what the average responsibility is.
Well, normally I think we would ask our executive assistant to do that, but currently we are short that staff, so.
Right, and being that it's January and W twos and all that, you know, I don't know if she's over pretty busy this month. Or, or if we wanna just divide up.
She, the HR staff in the state have a listserv that she can send out an e- listserv type of an email, and it goes to all of them. So it's like one email, and then she gets all kinds of replies back. I, I wish, and I've made this suggestion to the, to the uh. Administrators, the uh, Na- National Association of County Administrators, it's a, um. What do we call it, the AOC, it's an affiliate, affiliate organization to AOC. Um, I've recommended it to them to do the same thing and create the same thing, so that, so that when somebody in the state made a. An ask, a question for how's, how is your county doing this? They, they can reply back, but it gets saved, so down the road, if somebody else that wasn't on their radar at the time, they could go back and search it, and the information's there. And you don't have to ask the question again, but they're re- resistant to implementing. Well, the, the, the data would be compiled over time when people put those feelers out there for questions, that really. Really is not a labor-intensive thing, because knowing labor is as a county replies back, it becomes part of that, that listserv.
Well, what's interesting is um, the SBA Association of School Boards. The state actually does have a, a function like that, because so many school boards ask them so many questions, but they actually save. Questions and answers in a section where you can go into the frequently asked question section. And so there are other entities for the delegation now, because it saves them a lot of time, staff lines. When that occurs, so.
So HR can send out one email, uh, message and request that, and we'll see what we get back.
It's one thing when I call the county judge, and I mean, you know these guys, so they're pretty, pretty good, but if you could. Call the county court judges yourself and have a conversation judge to judge. And hear what they tell you, that you can share with us about why they believe county courts the better way. Or why they're, they can understand why we're looking at it, I mean, just in case there's something that we need to hear.
Well, I think Clerk Robin Flynn has shared some changes even with the probate process with us that, you know, brings up. More concern for us even keeping into the future as the state's making changes to that, and it, it becomes a more cumbersome process.
I don't understand, I, I don't want probate to stay if the elected officials of the governing body, I believe it belongs more in the judicial. System that exists and can already handle it, the circuit courts, I just personally, I just, not the personal, but.
So a little, a little background Oregon history, I believe it was around, it was around nineteen oh eight, I think, early nineteen hundreds. The circuit court system was, was created, the criminal, all, so, so prior to that, all counties had a county court. The county judge with the criminal judge, the administrative judge, everything. And then in the early nineteen hundreds, like I said, I don't know these, I wanna say for some reason nineteen oh eight stands out, but I'm not sure. Um, they created the circuit court system, all the criminal stuff went through the circuit court system statewide. Uh, counties kept juvenile, probate, administrative, ordinance enforcement. Um, the judicial, kept those judicial responsibilities. Over time, all but obviously seven counties have given, almost six really, if you wanna consider Cook County is, is not having any of those responsibilities. Um. Have given up a portion of or all of those, those responsibilities. Harney County still only remains with probate responsibility, um, this ORS one eleven basically is the probate, probate statute. Um, and yeah, a lot of it is very routine. Uh, it's reviewing files and making sure that the proper procedures and follow processes are followed for the, for the uh. Individuals that are within probate, whether that's a deceased individual, or it's a individual that has a, has a guardian. Or a personal representative that monitors and takes care of their finances. A lot of it's very routine in that matter, just making sure the reports are filed and everything. When it gets uh, cumbersome is when you have uh, protests in a probate situation. Where family members protest. A will, maybe, or even without a will, the distribution of, of resources of, of property from a, from a decedent. Those, when they get that way, we, I just did one this evening, as a matter of fact, right before five o'clock, we sent one upstairs. It, it had the air that it was gonna be tricky, and it was better for the legal minds to deal with it than, than myself. If we go to a, to a board of commissioners and, and get re- um, divested in this responsibility. Um, we've already spoken to the circuit court judge about that staff taking on that, it's not a real big workload. It, it's really not, like I say, most of it is a lot of procedural, just procedural processes. Uh, once in a while, again, one of the recent things that just took effect as of January is that if a, a protected person. Uh, can't afford legal counsel, much like uh, somebody who's been arrested and gets appointed uh, legal counsel. Now, uh, protected persons who can't afford are, are eligible for appointed legal counsel as well. And that, again, that gets into some pretty cumbersome situations, number one, the county couldn't afford it, county couldn't afford, because if, if we kept that portion of it. We would have to provide and pay for that legal counsel, if those kind of things get switched over to the state, then the state is the one out of their appointed. Pool of money will pay for it, so there's, so there's some financial concerns there as well for giving up that, that responsibility.
And there's one other thing that uh, um. Can be as county judge, Steve Grassi, you know, had, has mentioned to me off and on over the years is. He's a very strong advocate to stay a county court, he thinks it's very important to have a county judge. He said that, that ti- that title of county judge opened so many doors for him in Salem and elsewhere that wouldn't have been open to him. It, otherwise, but I will say in my seven years on the court, I have always been able to speak with, meet with whoever. Just as a county commissioner, no problem, and um, and I think a lot of, I, I haven't experienced that myself. I don't think that's necessarily true across the board. Uh, I, I just think a, a commissioner can do, do the commissioner kind of work representing Harney County. Uh, the term judge, I think that maybe ears perk up, but, but they're usually thinking of circuit court judge, not a county judge.
More time describing that I'm not a criminal judge, and that I can't fix somebody's traffic citation. Then, then.
The confusion's real for folks, yeah, of what it is and what it isn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm the same, I've never found a door to be closed yet, but you need an access to.
In my observations and attending meetings and whatnot, I don't see a difference myself either in a commissioner that's at a meeting. Or a judge that's at a meeting. So, I, I don't have any concern there, do we want to, so we talked about some, some action things, or is there some more action things that we want to? Bring back to the next work session.
Um, I have one thing that I was going to propose uh, to the court to bring back to the next work session. Uh, in some of my discussion with uh, constituents regarding this matter. Uh, one of them shared with me a contact in the Vand area that does, um, he's associated with the Ford Foundation. Um, his wife works for a, a company in Harney County, but. Uh, he has a wealth of knowledge with the county administrator piece, and also does facilitating for meetings. Uh, he has a wealth of knowledge with the county administrator piece and also does facilitating for meetings. And so if the court were to want me to have a discussion with them or we can even get him in a Zoom meeting with us. We could uh, visit with him about, you know, what he could potentially bring to the table for us to help us navigate this conversation. You know, um, I think not having to beat every door. And that would be nice for us if, if we did find a resource that we know is trusted and could. Um, you know, bring some of that to the table for future meetings and, and helping the public. Um, become better informed because the last thing I want to do is for us to, to make a decision in a county court meeting regarding this. And then have the public not be aware of what we're doing and be caught off guard and anyone by it. And so I want to make sure that we find a way to better involve the, the citizens of Harney County as, as we try to navigate this moving forward.
Cause I very much want to know, uh, is it, is it both or just one that the um, I mean. I like, I like things to be a vote of the people if people are informed, you know, fairly informed on things. And um, someone like that might be able to help us navigate the communication piece as well. Which is a, a challenge in Harney County because, I mean, if we all had the time to be writing articles as best we can. To inform people of major things that we work on or that we're aware of, then we would be. I keep saying I'm, I'm going to do that and it, there's just not enough hours in the day right now, um, but. Yeah.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't oppose it. I'd want to hear what the individual might bring to the table.
I could make an initial call and set up a time where we could all meet with him. And, you know, have a, a little work session with him so that we can find out, you know. With his background, what, what he could do, like you said, the communication piece I think would be great. Um, I've seen a lot of good facilitation happen in meetings. And so I think that that could be, you know, a way to help bring the public up to speed and, and be involved. And feel like they are involved with this process because I don't want it to be a vacuum process.
So I haven't studied this completely as far as uh, ORS two zero three point two three zero. Board of County Commissioners abolishing office of county judge and establishing board of, of county commissioners in detail yet. But the little bit of, of skimming that I did, I believe there's two ways of doing that process. And one of them is an order from the court and the other is from the electors, where we actually put it to the electors for their, for their vote. Short of, um, I think that would help get us the data and actually get the word out there. Uh, versus especially right off the bat that we're still working through the kinks. Uh, and it might be, might have until May twelfth or so, or uh, March twelfth or so to, to do this. But we can place an advisory question on the, on the ballot that would ask the community. Are you in favor of transition from, and then would have a brief description with it and whatnot. So, so it's one way to go to the community that's on a ballot that's already being put out. Um, and it's an advisory question that, that you get, you're getting feedback from the public. So, so that's something that we might want to think about pretty quick before those, before they have to check with the clerk tomorrow and find out what the deadline could be. But I'm going to say probably the same deadline as filing for office much.
So you'll bring that information.
So that's something that, you know, as we're moving into this process, to put it out there to the people of Harney County and ask them what they think about. About converting from county court to a board commissioners. And it just gives, i- i- it would also serve as part of that, maybe that initial communication effort too, to the people that this is what we're, we're exploring.
That's a good idea.
Anything else? Any other action items or? Try and keep it in an hour, I think, because we really need to.
I think, uh, you know, spending some more time, like you say, with uh, chapter two oh three. Becoming more familiar with it, finding out from the court what that would take to put it on the ballot. And then um, I'll go ahead and initiate a conversation and, and find out if that resource will be available to discuss that matter with us. And we can, you know, probably even tack it on to a future county court meeting.
And I'm going to call a few more of the counties also.
So I'll get, I'll, I'll make a request through, through HR for job descriptions. So we can compare and contrast in those roles. Um, I'll check with the clerk. I'll call county judges and get their take on it.
And I'll call commissioners, yeah, sounds good.
Can I make just a quick comment and just from an outside perspective? Like if we're going to speak with commissioners and judges as well about the county administrator. Um, I feel like it would be maybe valuable to have uh, uh, administrator perspective as well. To contact those administrators that currently work in the county and.
Do currently go to the administrative meeting.
Just give us a complete picture.
Yeah, they, they have the one every year at the annual conference.
Other than that one meeting?
They were doing it some last year, but it seems like it's fallen way off.
Because there is kind of a group through AOC that are the county administrators, but I've never attended that meeting and so.
It wasn't very well attended this past AOC, no, the, the one, two years ago before I actually took office. That was, the room was pretty full and this year's, this year's was not very well attended. So I don't know if that group is losing steam or, or what, but.
But I think that's a great idea and in fact, I'd be very comfortable, at least when I make the call is to say, you know, I wanted to chat with you. And also we'll be chatting with your, you know, administrator, um, but I want to hear your perspective and, and call them so they know I'm doing it. But, you know.
Yeah, they might, they say meet outside of that AOC meeting, but even within AOC's regular meetings. What, where is a, do the administrators tend to attend any of the AOC meetings? I know they've been on just occasionally depending on the topic, but outside of that.
I don't know, they're not to my knowledge. I mean, they're not, I think they have their own association where they do their, the bulk of their work and meetings. You know.
Uh, either way, I'm not trying to, to.
Meeting that they already have.
Either, either I can call Jeff Rasmussen, who is the county administrator out of um, Madras, Jefferson County. Um, I can call him and find out, because I haven't gotten any notice of any.
He would be a good person for you to call because he's been going to AOC, the regular AOC since I've been a commissioner.
But I would ask, I mean, I've got three action items myself here already, that if I get you guys, get one of you a, a date and time of meetings. Could you be willing to attend one of those on that question? Okay, I'll, I'll reach out and get the information then for, for if and when they're having a, a meeting. I haven't seen any email traffic from, from the NACA, NACA stuff for quite a while.
NACO or NA?
No, it's, it's National Association of County Administrators. It's an affiliate organization to, to AOC and, and NACO.
Well, in Jefferson County, those seem to have a functioning um, board of commissioners with an administrator. And so I think that, yeah, he would be.
He's that unicorn, I think. He does a really good job in that role. That um, Jefferson County's got a good, got a good one there to take care of that business one. Anything else for this evening?
No, I don't have anything additional.
Do we want to set uh, another work session at this time?
No, so this is the.
Do we want to keep it on a county court session day?
I like that just because we're all here in the.
Seven, the other days we're all.
Say you're going to be gone on the twenty first.
Yeah, I just got on the twenty first, but I didn't be here on seven, I think we wanted to do it. That evening.
You got both phones.
I loved it in my work time when I was feeding this morning.
Even our tentative, hold on a second.
Yeah.
And we're, we're posting this, right?
Yes.
So that people can listen to it.
Yeah, um, our YouTube channel with the. Uh, Bat Team videos and this and budget committee meetings as we get rolling is, is going to get a lot of stuff on. But that, that's fine. That's what it's there for.
Yep.
So, but yes, it doesn't take long to, to convert and upload it to YouTube.
Good, I think if people get the word and get directed to where they can listen to this, they're going to have a lot of good thoughts too. As questions and good thoughts for us, so.
And if anybody else is aware of any public meetings that are currently on that night, I know this night when I reached out to folks was actually. Surprisingly booked for a lot of other deals, wasn't it? What I wasn't aware of prior, and so if there is a, a better night with the public, you know, has, you know, feel free to let us know.
We don't have.
This night, it's dawn, Burn City, California, meeting tonight. There, there is ever two weeks.
Yeah, I think there was at least three other meetings that I found out, but I was like, oh.
Well, we're down by six. I think they start at six and then. Format for these work sessions. Um, I'm, I'm all for light conversation and exchange of information. I don't want any of these meetings to become cumbersome with a lot of back and forth. And I'm going to ask y'all, what to, that was from my southern time in Texas. What's your thoughts on that? Do you want to keep it as a county court in our discussion? Or do we want to open it up, be able to open it up for any public comment?
You know, I think at some point we do need to open it up for public comment, um, you know, especially like with any of our meetings. If, if we come with an agenda that has some specific topics, you know, maybe, I know at uh, school board meetings. They'll have the public fill out a, a deal that um, they state what part of the a- agenda or what they want to speak to. And so I think that, you know, we could even have folks be like, this is specifically why I have some information that I'd like to share with the court on. Uh, you know, so that we could kind of stay in an organized manner uh, to do that. And that would just be one way that we could try to make sure that those comments are received and recorded.
And stay on the agenda.
And stay on the agenda so we can stay on topic and, and make sure that, you know, like I say, we keep them productive meetings. Where we feel like we're taking steps forward with each meeting to get to where we're trying to go.
Um, the other option, and I'm just throwing it out there, um. These evenings or these meetings at this time in the evening should facilitate the working person a little bit better to be able to attend. Uh, we might even look at pushing it back a half hour, maybe.
Yeah, I heard that suggestion.
So, so, so there's that to think about, um. Or we wait and hold any public comment to an actual pu- uh, county court session. I, I'm just throwing out the option. That's, I, I don't really care. Like I said, as long as we can do it in a manner that we stay on track. That we stay on course and it doesn't become a, a soapbox issue really.
Right. Um, I would be willing to, to develop, you know, the, a little public comment meeting card. So folks can fill it out and, you know, typically they hand it to the board chairs, the meeting starts. And then you know how much public comment is being offered up during the meeting. And so we can kind of navigate our time with the amount of public comment that we're.
Have the same topic on multiples of them, we.
Right, and we can let folks know so that as one person talks, they can be like, oh, they've covered it, you know. So that we don't have to retread a lot of ground.
Okay. I'm good with that myself. I mean, I want to.
I, I've seen it be effective in meetings and still allow people to be able to give specific input depending on the topic at hand.
I think it's the, it's however we want to design it, so I'm fine with that. Anything further?
It's good, it's good first introductory um, conversation.
Uh, February, did we say February seventh at uh, five thirty instead?
Okay.
All right, thank you everybody. Thank you Susan for sticking around, thank you Minnesota for us. New Little County Court work session shall stand adjourned. Thank you everybody for coming.